I call to order the February 2nd City Council Regular Meeting and ask all of those who would like to join myself and the council in the Pledge of Allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Our first item of business this evening under Special Business is Agenda Bill 6943, the Mayor's State of the City Address, and so I'm going to move to the podium and present that. My fellow citizens, community members, business leaders, city employees, and Issaquah City Council members, I'm honored to appear before you tonight to present my State of the City Address. As I enter my second year as mayor, I see every day how our community is evolving. It's not the same Issaquah I moved to 25 years ago. It is more prosperous, more diverse, and more connected than at any time in its history, all because our community is improving every day. All around us, Issaquah is undergoing a transformation that started more than two decades ago as our community began to grow from a small town to a small city. As I stand before you tonight, our community is vibrant, our future is hopeful, and the state of our city is strong. Now more than ever, Issaquah is the best place for you to invest your future. Every day, new residents make their home here, new businesses open their doors, and new visitors experience Issaquah's treasures for the first time. In ways large and small, concrete and conceptual, we're working every day to build your future. We are building a future for everybody, for the cashier at Costco and the surgeon at Swedish, for the preschooler at the Issaquah Community Center, and the PTA parent at Issaquah Valley Elementary, for the volunteer at the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank, and the retiree at Timber Ridge. I am grateful for the opportunities ahead of us, but I'm mindful of the hard work that is necessary to maintain Issaquah as an outstanding place to live, work, play, learn, and visit. For generations, our community has welcomed new residents with open arms. Issaquah has always been a city of neighbors, of strong families, and of deep community ties. Now, as we enter our 12th decade as a city and as we change the way we grow, our values remain the same. As our community evolves, we will always work to improve the lives of our people, protect our planet, and strengthen our economic prosperity. We cannot build your future alone. We are building your future by collaborating with citizens, businesses, nonprofits, schools, and community organizations to find solutions to our shared challenges. In the past 123 years, our community has grown from a small frontier mining town into a hub for innovation. Today, our community is one of the most desirable places to live for people of all ages, from 20-somethings working at startups to outdoor enthusiasts seeking the perfect place to retire. As we move deeper into a new century, we have redefined the way Issaquah will grow in the decades ahead: up, not out; compact, not sprawling; and more reliant on our feet, not on our cars. Throughout our business district, the future is being built right before our eyes as the central Issaquah plan moves from ideal idea to reality. We recently finalized an agreement with Costco Wholesale that would enable the nation's second-largest retailer to grow its international headquarters here in Issaquah. Collaborating with Issaquah's business community, our combined efforts allow us to enhance our economic prosperity, help small businesses succeed, and promote our community as a tourist destination. With guidance from our citizens and a goal set by our city council, we are working with the Downtown Issaquah Association to ensure old town retains its charm, historic character, and lively commercial district. We are building your future to ensure Issaquah grows into a healthier community as time passes. Soon, our City Hall team will add a social sustainability coordinator to spearhead our human services strategy and coordinate efforts with our partners, including the Issaquah Drug-Free Community Coalition, Eastside Baby Corner at Work, and the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank. Our community, like cities throughout the Puget Sound region and the nation, is not immune to the challenges of homelessness, substance abuse, and mental illness. Despite these challenges, Issaquah is a safe community that respects the dignity, rights, and safety of everyone. We are fortunate to live in a community that is working together across government, businesses, nonprofits, and citizens to address these issues and further improve Issaquah's outstanding quality of life. Part of our healthy community strategy is to provide more opportunities for our citizens to enjoy Issaquah's natural beauty and recreation programs. Thanks to strong support from our community, construction will start this year on a new skate park. In 2014, using dollars from a bond approved by more than two-thirds of our voters, we improved our parks and gave our children better places to play. I'm proud to say that our team consistently delivers these projects on time and on budget. In the year ahead, we will reopen Julius Bone Pool, a community asset that was once crumbling due to age. Now, thanks to support from our voters, our renovated pool will save us thousands of dollars in energy costs annually. In addition, it will be a more welcoming environment for the hundreds of swim lessons, fitness classes, and swim meets we host each year. We are also building your future to make it easier for you to move through Issaquah, whether you're on a bike, on a bus, on foot, or behind the wheel. Every day, we are working to address the most pressing challenge facing our community: traffic. Last month, our city council made a wise decision to overhaul the way our community pays for improvements to our roads and transportation system. Recently, we were awarded nearly $18 million in state grants to help move goods and people on some of our most heavily-used streets. Upcoming projects will improve East Lake-Samamish Parkway and extend Southeast 62nd Street. A long-awaited transformation of Northwest Dogwood Street will replace a narrow bridge and improve access for bicyclists and pedestrians along this important corridor. With our Mobility Master Plan, we are literally creating a roadmap for the future by building a framework to guide projects for drivers, bicyclists, and pedestrians, as well as transit and parking. Let me be clear: these investments will require broad support from our community in order to be successful. It is the shared responsibility of government, businesses, and citizens to invest in our future. The success of our community vision for the future also hinges on regional transit investments. As your voice on the Sound Transit Board, it is my highest priority to include Issaquah in future plans for high-capacity transit service. To increase opportunities for future transit investment, we recently submitted our application to make Issaquah a regional center for housing and employment growth, as well as a stronger candidate for regional transportation dollars. In the short term, King County Metro will launch a new shuttle route to connect Issaquah to the Snoqualmie Valley. This new service will offer another option for commuters and relieve some of the pressure on the popular Issaquah Highlands Park-and-Ride. I applaud our partners for recognizing the need in our communities and expanding transit options throughout the region. A strong economy is vital as we build your future. To attract new businesses and additional investments, we will work with our partners to improve our regional presence and show innovators throughout the Pacific Northwest that Issaquah is open for business. We will capitalize on our community's reputation for creative thinking by identifying and growing businesses that complement our community. After identifying opportunities last year, we've taken the first steps to market Issaquah as a tourist destination. Moving forward, we will work with our community to share with visitors what makes Issaquah unique. Throughout 2014, and with help from Salmon Days, Sasquatch, and the Seahawks, we reached more than 10 million people online. By featuring Issaquah through our website and social media platforms, we showed the world what makes us special while creating a sense of community here at home. As we build your future, we are strengthening our fiscal foundation to fund tomorrow's priorities. Our balanced budget funds critical needs now and restructures our finances for the future. I want to thank the business community for working with us to make such needed changes to our B&amp;O tax structure and the way our community pays for growth. I'm proud of saying our team at City Hall emphasizes projects over paper, or put another way, we place a high value on results. Soon, we will share the results of our recent community survey, a crucial step as we work to provide the best possible service to our customers, whether it's face-to-face or through smartphone. At City Hall, our team of innovators is the key to our success. We are fortunate to have outstanding employees who treat their colleagues as a second family. By changing the way we do business, your government is more friendly, flexible, and responsive than ever. Our goal every day is simple: to provide the best possible service to you, our customers. For instance, we will soon cut our land use permitting process by 50% from an average of 162 days to 80 days. To boost our productivity and increase collaboration across departments, our team is implementing a welcome upgrade to our financial system. I cannot thank our team enough for its dedication and hard work. When I walk into City Hall every morning, I am reminded that this is the best job I have ever had. Our team at City Hall is representative of our broader community, and at Issaquah, we're confident in our identity and our vision for the future, traits that are reflected in the high caliber of our public servants and our civic discourse. In the past year, we strengthened ties with other agencies, resolved differences in a constructive way, and worked with the city of Samamish to chart a path forward for our neighbors in the Clohanni area. These endeavors allowed us to add to a long legacy of regional cooperation and further enhance our reputation throughout the Puget Sound region. As you can see, your community and your government are constantly evolving. Now more than ever, Issaquah is the best place for you to invest your future. In the year ahead, we will seize the opportunities ahead of us, deepen our community partnerships, find innovative solutions to challenges, and build your future in a community that is an outstanding place to live, work, play, learn, and visit. I am proud to be your mayor. And with that, we will now move to audience comments. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment will have the opportunity to do so. When recognized, use the lectern and speak into the microphone. Please state your name, address, and relationship to the city, and limit your comments to five minutes. If you have written comments, please submit those to the city clerk. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. If a speaker is out of order, I'll direct the speaker to return to his or her seat. Speaker does not comply, I will then ask him or her to leave the council chambers. Again, citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. The city takes those comments seriously and factors those into the decision-making process. And with that, I would ask if anyone has signed up to speak this evening? Since no one has signed up, is there anyone in the audience desiring to speak this evening? Anyone in the audience desiring to speak? Third and final call: anyone in the audience desiring to speak? Seeing none then, audience comments closed, and we'll now move to committee and regional reports, beginning with Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your address this evening. I have just a few reports from the month of January. I have a couple of new assignments, so I just wanted to share this with you. This year, I am working with the S E A, the Sound Cities Association, as a representative in an alternate position to the King Conservation District Advisory Commission Council, excuse me, and they meet only quarterly. We had our first meeting on January 21st. The Board of Supervisors does much of the work there with the staff. Our next meeting will be in April, and the meeting that we had in January was to have a review of what was accomplished in the previous year, in 2014, when Mary Lou Polly was our representative, and they did a lot of work. And so I'm really excited to take that groundwork that they've done and go forward with the King Conservation District. Another meeting in January was with the Chamber of Commerce. Again, that was Mary Lou Polly's assignment in 2014, and now it's mine in 2015. So I was new, but they were also introducing their new board. Their new chairman of the board is Alan Finkelstein, and they had a discussion about their upcoming year, their membership campaign, and the exciting things that they have to offer to their members and to the city of Issaquah. They have quite a full schedule, and they also have a very strong statement of commitment to delivering value to their members. That's what their new campaign is all about, so it was exciting to hear them discuss that. I reported on behalf of the city our committee assignments, the ones that are within the city council, and just a smattering of those of our regional assignments to show them how well-represented we were around the region. And I want to mention, though it wasn't announced at that meeting, it has subsequently been made public, that the CEO of the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce, Matt Bott, will be leaving, and I'm very sad at that news, and I wanted to share my sadness with you. He's been great for the last several years, but I know he will be great in his new position with Sound Transit. So there's an opening over at the chamber for a new CEO. The last meeting I had regionally was with the Cascade Water Alliance, where I serve as an alternate to the mayor, and we had a wonderful, long meeting last week, which is the special Board of Directors' annual meeting to chart the future course, but it wasn't just the future course for one year, it was a retreat to talk about the 10-year plan. And the Cascade Water Alliance is very progressive and keeps ahead of the curve, and that was a very exciting meeting. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Polly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Land and Shore did not have a meeting in January. The February meeting is scheduled for Thursday, February 12th, at 5:30 in these chambers. The agenda for that meeting will include a discussion of AB 6896, an amendment to the King County countywide planning policies. We'll be looking at the 2015 Comp Plan docket of items for approval this year, and we'll be getting an update on the Regional Growth Center application. We'll also look at our 2015 Plan of Work. Meeting for March is not going to be on its usual date, so if I give advance notice, it's going to be on Thursday, March 12th, at 5:30 also in these chambers.
Councilmember Marts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Services and Safety Committee will be meeting next Tuesday, February 10th, 5:30 p.m. in the Eagle Room across the street, and, boy, we have a full and exciting agenda. We have Arts Grant Recommendations, Library Board Annual Report, Wyre Eight Inter-local Agreement, Public Defense Monitoring Inter-local Agreement, Arch Proposed Work Program for 2015, Arch Fall 2014 Housing Trust Fund Recommendation, some staff authorizations for Public Works Engineering Department, and last but not least, amending one of the IMCs, a proposed bill for inmate health and welfare account booking fee, which I know there are councilmembers who feel very strongly about this issue, so it will be a very full and a good start to my being Chair of Services and Safety. Clearly, they're not going easy on me for my first meeting. And then, the next night, the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting at 7:00 p.m. in Renton City Hall, and I will be asking this council's thoughts on an issue that's going to be coming before the pick during the good of the order. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to members of the viewing public. The Council Infrastructure Committee will not have a February meeting due to lack of agenda bills for our consideration. We do anticipate, however, to meet again in the month of March, which is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, March 19th, at 5:30 p.m. in the Pickering Room of City Hall Northwest. The agenda for the March meeting will be posted as soon as it becomes available, probably sometime in early March. In addition, the Eastside Transportation Partnership will be meeting on Friday, February 13th, at 7:30 in the morning, our usual meeting time at the Bellevue School District Headquarters Boardroom. And we do anticipate on the agenda, I still have about a week and a half to get it sorted out, but I do anticipate an agenda involving a representative from the Transportation Improvement Board, the T I B, potentially other speakers talking about project selection criteria on a state and county-wide level. We will have our own representative from the city of Issaquah presenting in the first of our new project showcase to talk with Eastside members about what our city is doing on major transportation projects, and we will also have a discussion and report from our Planning Committee. The agenda for that meeting, as I said, is not completely finalized, but those are some of the highlights that are coming up for the E T P. And just as a heads-up, in March, we're expecting to have some legislators at that meeting, legislator or plural, who will be speaking to us about some of the ongoing efforts in Olympia regarding a transportation package. So mark your calendars if you are one of our alternates for E T P. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber.
Now report.
And Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board met last Wednesday for an annual goal-setting session, and it was a very productive, engaging, and just a very positive experience. And I could easily summarize it myself, but I thought I might read a summary report that Eastside Fire and Rescue sent out the next day. Once a week, Jay Hart of Eastside Fire and Rescue sends out sort of a newsletter, and the following day, there was a little brief in there about the goal-setting session. So this is written by Jay at Eastside Fire and Rescue. "The directors met at headquarters Wednesday, last Wednesday, to get settled in as a board with 50% attrition from 2014, and also begin the process of setting direction for the year and beyond. Chairman God Health had all directors introduce themselves and asked each to share their top two priorities for the agency. He then went into rumor-squashing after expressing his desire for the board to become more united and transparent regarding matters where concerns exist. A healthy amount of time was afforded to ask questions about a regional fire authority formation effort pursued by some interlocal agreement parties, and also to ask questions about the nonprofit status establishment of E F R, which has been held up for various reasons. These two matters had been sources of concern and divisiveness previously." I was most impressed, Jay writes that he was most impressed, he was at the meeting the whole time, "with the quick start from the gate of the chairman's desire of moving past the past and setting a new tone for the work and collaborative expectations of the directors. Vice Chair Mary Lou Polly then took the group down a goal-setting process where each director was asked to clarify proposed goals. Twenty goals, he thinks, were submitted, I think there were 21 goals submitted, to include allowance for clarification of each, questions from board, and staff, and also there were some audience comments. The meeting went nearly five hours. Safe to say, there was much discussion about succession planning, given the anticipated retirements in the next year by several in senior leadership, that includes Chief Leesoptick. Goals related to governance, finance, and operations rounded out the rest of the field." Jay then finally writes, "Since 1995, I have not witnessed a more deliberate and devoted process by the board. The work now turns to our administration, which will provide to the board what would be involved if a goal is selected. The directors will reconvene for Part Two of the process, where they will select the goals and then prioritize that same list." So I just thought this was a really nice summary from Eastside Fire and Rescue. The tone was just very nice and welcoming and positive, and I think that was a universal feeling. The E F N R staff has the goals, and they are responding, and it's sort of, you know, a similar process to what the council, what we had this past year. And the February 12th Board meeting, I believe the board at that time will hear from staff about when we should be able to set our date for Round Two, Part Two, for picking the final goals. Now, I also have a spreadsheet of the goals, and if you're interested in reading those, I'm happy to send that around. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Wetterstein.
Thank you, Mayor Butler, and before I have my very brief report, I do want to, I want to thank you for an excellent, an excellent State of the City address, and I really do. I took a lot of notes. I liked the way you phrased and made some really good comments, it was very positive, and I agreed with much of what you had to say, so thank you very much.
Thank you. There is-
There is not going to be a committee of the whole work session meeting a week from tonight on February 9th. So that one is scheduled, but everybody's getting the day off, and we're assigning all the work to the Services and Safety Committee. That concludes my report.
I see a lot of smiles around the dais this evening. Thank you for the mayor's report. Just a tidbit of information, on this day in 1899, state lawmakers officially renamed our town from Gilman to Issaquah. In January of 1899, our town council asked the legislature to change our name to Issaquah, a name similar to the area's original native land. So I'm sure that our viewing public, everyone just finds that fascinating, so this day in history. Briefly, the mayor's report continues. At the Sound Transit Board meeting on January the 22nd, we received a briefing on a public opinion survey looking at the potential for Sound Transit III. Some 1,500 registered voters were surveyed between December the 11th and December the 21st. Some of the key findings, optimism in the Puget Sound region continues to be at a historic high. Sound Transit's favorable rating continues to be near its all-time high. Majority of voters think that the best way to address traffic problems is expanding transit. Support for a hypothetical ST3 package is more than 2/3 or about 70% of regional transit authority voters, and that support does not change when voters hear the potential proposals additional median cost per adult of $78 a year. Myself, City Administrator Bob Harrison, developer Skip Raleigh, and Rayburn Lewis, CEO of Issaquah Swedish Hospital, met with members of the legislature last Wednesday in Olympia. Members we met with, we met with the Senate Transportation Chair, Senator Curtis King, Senate Floor Leader Joe Fain, Senator Steve Litzell, representatives from our Legislative Fifth District, Senator Mark Mullet, Representative Chad Magandas, and Representative Jay Rodney. We had good discussions on the I-90 corridor funding needs, as well as our $2.5 million capital request for Confluence Park. We met with Senator Richard DeBolt, who chairs the Legislative Capital Committee, to brief him on Confluence Park. And with that, that includes the mayor's report this evening. And I would now ask the city clerk to read into the record our consent calendar for this evening.
Yes. Consent calendar items. First on the list, Item A seeks approval of account payable and payroll dated February 2nd. Item B seeks approval of minutes for the city council regular meeting dated January 20th. Items C through G and I all seek referral to Council Services and Safety Committee for review, excuse me, for review and recommendation. They are AB 6937, Library Board Annual Report and Amendments to IMC 2.28, AB 6941, Wyre Eight Interlocal Agreement, AB 6942, Public Defense Monitoring Interlocal Agreement and Related Grant Acceptance, AB 6944, Arch 2015 Proposed Work Program and Administrative Budget, AB 6945, Arch Fall 2014 Housing Trust Fund Recommendation, AB 6949, Additional Staff Authorization for Public Works Engineering Department. Item H is AB 6947, 2015 Docket of Comprehensive Plan Amendments. This seeks referral to Council Land and Shore Committee for review and recommendation. This concludes the reading.
Thank you. Have the accounts payable and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
Yes.
Thank you. And with that, I would ask if anyone desires to remove any items from the consent calendar down to regular business. Seeing none, then, your pleasure, Council President Wintersheim.
I move that we adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving now to regular business, Agenda Bill 6950, Collective Bargaining Agreements. During the mayor's report, I should have stated that there will be an executive session held this evening for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining agreements. RCW 42.30.140, Pren 4, Pren B, this item is expected to take approximately 30 minutes. Action is anticipated to follow in open session. And about 30 minutes?
Yeah.
So with that, we will adjourn into executive session at 7:37. We are back in regular session at 8:10, and we had just included an executive session on Agenda Bill 6950, Collective Bargaining Agreements. And I announced when we went into executive session that action was anticipated following that executive session. Council President Wintersheim?
Thank you, Mayor Butler. I would like to move that we approve authoring the mayor to enter into and execute the 2015-2016 labor contract for the Issaquah Administrative Staff Association.
Second.
Moved and seconded discussion on the motion. Council President Wintersheim?
I want to thank the staff. Debbie, I want to thank you for the presentation this evening, and thanks for the work. And, you know, should this pass, I honestly believe that the negotiations were conducted in good faith, and I'm very grateful to our members of the Issaquah Administrative Staff Association who have support this contract themselves. And I hope and believe it will foretell a good working relationship as we've had over the years with our staff. And thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion or comments? Seeing none, then, all those in favor of authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute the 2015-2016 labor contract for the Issaquah Administrative Staff Association signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Now, moving into good of the order, I believe, Councilmember Marts, you indicated that you had an item for good of the order this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Indeed, I do. So at the last Public Issues Committee meeting of the Sound Cities Association, we had an initial conversation about an item titled "Support for Flexibility and Investment of Hotel Motel Taxes for Affordable Housing." And let me just read what that policy would be. To bring back to the next pick meeting, the proposed policy position. "The Sound Cities Association supports legislation to allow King County to bond against future hotel motel tax revenue reserved for housing beginning in 2021. To accomplish this, RCW 67.28.183I will need to be amended with a technical fix that specifically authorizes bonding for affordable housing. Such legislation would allow King County to bond against future revenue and allow up to $45 million in new housing funds to be released over the next six years to create and preserve affordable workforce housing in coordination with transit investments." And then there was an addendum to say that the Joint Recommendations Committee for Community Development Block Grant and County Consortium has this as a high priority on its legislative agenda, as does the Committee to End Homelessness Governing Board. So the SCA released a sort of Q and A document associated with this, and let me just cut to the high points of this. Basically, there is currently, King County lodging taxes are being used to pay off our sports stadiums, but are projected to be finished in 2021. And at that time, the legislature has said that the revenue will be divided three ways. Arts and heritage will receive 37.5%. Tourism will receive 25%. And affordable housing near transit will receive 37.5%. And so basically, what this measure would allow is, it would allow bonding against half of that 37.5%, so 17.75%, I think, if my math is right. And so what that would do is, I think my math is wrong, but anyhow, half 37.5. And so that would generate a revenue stream of approximately $7.5 million annually for affordable housing, starting in 2015. Starting in 2021, an additional $7.5 to $15 million in unobliged revenues would be available. After the bonds are paid back in approximately 2045, the portion of the lodging tax dedicated to housing is projected to generate then $10 to $20 million per year in total. So, and the argument for this, I would say, in the conversation that occurred and in the supplemental materials, is that transit, right now, the housing that is developing around transit centers is not, it's not meeting sort of expectations for affordable housing. But the development is starting to occur around these locations, and that if we wait until 2021, if we wait six years, a lot of the real estate that is available will be gone, or it'll be substantially more expensive. And there's actually information in here provided with some specific examples around land value appreciation in Seattle Othello Station, 1996 through 2011, and it shows you how real estate values increase. And so the argument is, act now, this housing would be available sooner, and/or at all, depending on the development that occurs. The reason to couple, why couple these particular lodging taxes to affordable housing, the perception is, or the expectation is, that many of the workers in the hotel industry would be expected to take advantage of this affordable housing. And that's why there's, if somebody says, well, why would you tie these two things together, that's the argument. I will say that the argument against has been really just around the idea of credit, you know, spending money now for revenue that you're going to have later. That's been the sort of counterargument. So with that, I wanted to ask if anybody here has any thoughts on how we should be voting on this issue when it comes before pick next week?
I'd like to ask a clarifying question. I think you just sort of answered it, though. Has housing, affordable housing ever been funded through this?
It's projected that it will be. I mean, this-
But was it before?
Well, it was the stadiums. It's been stadiums. This tax was put in place basically to pay for the stadiums, and then it was the legislature that did that mix of arts and heritage for 3/8, tourism for 1 quarter, and affordable housing near transit for 3/8. So that's sort of a legislative imperative to use this money once the stadiums are paid off.
Do you want our answer?
No.
Your thoughts?
I'll listen to some other people.
Actually, I think the counterargument about the credit, about spending the money before you have it, is a pretty serious one to consider. However, there's a real estate reality here, and we can already see it with housing that's been built around train stations already, and I think this is an appropriate way to do it. And the concern about the credit for me is diminished by, I think we lose the opportunity if we don't do it this way. I just don't think we'll be able to afford the land. So I think it's well thought out, and I thought SCA's information they prepared was really well put together, very, very informative. So I'd be in favor of adopting what SCA was-
Josh?
Thank you. So this is sort of at a glance, off the cuff, thoughts. I think Ray Lou's remarks are spot on in terms of the need to do the investment sooner rather than later. I'm sort of looking at it almost from the opposite perspective, though, putting a little more credence on the credit argument. The piece of information that if I were on the committee I would want to see is whether the hotel motel tax revenues, even in assuming our most recent recession being a darkest hour we can have in the most recent distant past, would those revenues from back in that period of time, the late part of last decade, have been sufficient to pay off the bonds? Because my concern is that we don't know what the economy is going to look like in 2021, 2030, et cetera. And we don't know what the housing market or the job market is going to look like. And so there really is a significant risk, and so you have to weigh that against the importance of acquiring the property and being able to do these things before you lose that opportunity. And so the financial picture, I think, is so important to be able to say historically, we can say with a fair degree of certainty that if we do this, even based on our most darkest hour of the last decade or two, that even in that situation, so dire, we would have been able to sufficiently pay off these bonds, and sort of budget for a worst-case scenario situation. Otherwise, it does become a bit of a risky endeavor at this point, until you have a little more certainty about the way market conditions will look sometime in the next five to 10 years.
Just, I understand the idea of affordable housing. But if I'm looking back at sort of this, the dollars were originally used for the stadiums with the concept that the stadiums were driving economic vitality. So the stadiums were bringing in events, activities, those dollars were driving more economic vitality into the communities. If we're putting it into housing, and not that, I mean, it's an important issue, but it's not necessarily going to drive any more economic vitality dollars into our communities to offset a whole lot of other pieces. So that would be a concern that I would have, is like, we're sort of reusing these dollars, the return on the dollars is not what they are giving us now as far as more dollars in our communities to be used for a lot more things. Housing is important, I understand that, so it's a real tough kind of a look at it, but it's just a thought, loss of economic dollars.
A couple things, and since I'm a member of SCA appointed to the JRC, I want to make some comments about that. But first, Eileen, I think an important element here is the legislature in Olympia has already codified that, starting in 21, a portion of these lodging tax dollars will be appropriated, and there's three different categories, and so that, so that's kind of, that basis already exists. So the merits of that aren't in question, aren't the question right now. The question before is, should the legislature enable the county to bond against those future And for the purpose of, and I think you outlined it very well, I mean, there's a certain percentage of those dollars, and starting in 2017 or what year, 2016, it's starting to bond at up to 50% of what they forecasted for that. So there's no question right now about the merits of how the funds are to be used. That's not the question. Is that clear? I mean, the legislature has already set that. It's just whether or not the county should be able to bond against those future monies that are codified by the state legislature. So Mike-
This sort of goes back to Josh's question in regards to, are those, yeah.
Sure, sure. So I have a question, and- So I have a question, and what I realize before I even share what we talked about, the JRC, JRC, who would be the, this would be the county? So who's, how would a jurisdiction's bond rating be affected by, or is there an existing bond rating? Or how would this change in law perhaps play into a new bond rating? I don't know if I'm, that's right, Bob, do you have it? Can you help me out here?
Sure. So in many respects, because it's backed by the tax itself, it's like a revenue bond rather than a bond that would be based on the full faith and credit of the county or, you know, like a property tax. So it usually is, the bond itself and revenue bonds are rated in and of themselves, so the quality of the revenue source coming back in to reimburse the debt. So when you look at it, you're really, on the county side, you're looking at where are you going to get, is the appreciation of land over the next eight years going to be greater than what you're going to have to pay for carrying costs and then future investment, you know, dollars? And interest rates are so low right now, that, and actually, the cost of money is very, very low. So what the county will probably have to do, though, for some period of time, is pay for the carry costs between 2015 and 2021, when the revenue actually becomes available. But as, you know, someone on the Sound Transit Board is seeing, there's all types of development happening around transit centers, and the land is getting much more expensive than what the actual, you know, what you're going to probably be paying in interest costs. But a revenue bond generally is going to end up 5%, 6% in terms of what the carrying costs are.
Right, thank you. And so- Let me just say, you know, I heard the Othello Station mentioned. Land values there have skyrocketed with the, you know, since light rail stops at that station, and it is going to continue to appreciate until it's all gone.
Yeah, so just to share with the discussion at the JRC, and I think Councilmember Polly did a really, were you there? You did a good job of kind of summarizing those sentiments, and we've learned that, not just locally, but even nationally, more policy is shifting toward valuing what's called transitory development. And so to focus the use, you know, of the funds in that category is very consistent with what's being recognized at the national level for trans. It's also, you mentioned as being part of the legislative agenda, also part of the legislative agenda are multiple requests to restore things back to where they were in 2011. If you think the worst of the recession hit before then and we were in recovery, but since 2011, there have been so many dramatic cuts, both at the federal and state level for funds for housing in different categories, including for homelessness or home repair, or helping people stay in their homes, there's been quite a dramatic cuts. The requests are modest, they want to go back to 2011. They've fallen off so much, and just going back there is considered a moderate request. And so my take, and I think it was majority of the members of the JRC, it may have been unanimous as far as all I know, is that it's a, it was, it's a very impressive, creative way to, at minimally risk, do something for employee, for, excuse me, for our citizens in most need, to acquire housing at a cost, at today's costs, recognize that otherwise these properties and these opportunities would not be available at all. So I think across the board, it was applauded, and I applaud the creative thinking, you know, on the county's behalf. I don't, as Bob said, it's a revenue-based bond at limiting, and I think the only request is not more than 50% of what they would be actually eligible to collect. So I think there's a built-in, a little bit of a, there's quite a buffer there, further buffer in terms of prudent financial management and not borrowing up to your maximum amount. So we're seeing those trends. There's been transitory development in the county locally, most recently at South Kirkland Park and Ride, and I, we've definitely seen the trends that even federal dollars will be, more will be available. And I think even in the president's proposed budget, the housing and urban development is, there's quite a kick-up in funds proposed there, and this is one of those categories where it would be directed. So for those reasons, because it is, it is, seems financially sound policy, and it enables us to assist people now at a lower cost in an area where funding has been shrinking, I strongly support this bill. I think it's already in Olympia right now, and so my word back to the pick would be, or to you, would be in support.
Anyone else have a comment, Stacy?
I support it as well, for the reasons that Mary Lou stated and Paul stated.
I believe that everyone's, oh, Nina.
I wanted to wait and hear what people had to say. I appreciate what everyone has said, but I wanted to point total attention to Senate Bill 5208, which I think is what you're talking about, allowing the use of lodging taxes for financing workforce housing. Is that what we're talking about? And that looks like that's still in committee, and it passed through one committee, and it's going out to the Rules Committee for a second reading. So to say that it's a done deal, I'm not sure that it is. I tried to do some research while I was sitting here, and so this is, I'm shooting from the hip, but I hope that might be helpful to see how far it is. Now, if it does become passed by the state legislature that affordable workforce housing could be funded through this taxing vehicle, I appreciate these comments about bonding against, but I would still be cautious and strongly enforce a low limit. You said that there was a percentage of the allotment that could be bonded against, and I would encourage them to be highly conservative if they do decide to go that way.
Stacy?
Well, I was just going to clarify, unless I'm mistaken, I think the, what's been codified already is how the funds will be spent, how they will be divided once the stadiums are paid off. It's the bonding portion that's in committee right now. Is that your understanding?
That's not my understanding from this, but I'm, like I said, I'm asking for a follow-up, because what I'm reading does not occur with that.
So I just want to make sure I understand. It's, you want to make sure, because I believe Senate Bill 5208, according to the information that's provided by SCA, that says up to half of that 37.5%. So you're saying, go make sure that it's actually half, because what's in front of SCA is a policy position, right? It isn't saying, go, everybody support Senate Bill 5208, right? But I just want to make sure I understand your concern, that you want to make sure that, in fact, it is only a portion and not the entirety of that 37.5%?
I think what I'm saying is that if 5208 passes and affordable workforce housing is funded through the lodging tax, and an opportunity to bond against future tax revenues is available, that the percentage of expected revenue that would be bonded against, I think, should be very conservative because of the variability in-
But that's what I'm saying, I believe 5208 specifically says 50%, right? The information that we were given by SCA is that to bond against half of the portion of King County's lodging taxes, so half of that 37.5, that it is enshrined in Senate Bill 5208. That's what SCA is saying. Okay. All right, well-
I think true to the matter is, I think you have direction, and this has been a great discussion, and everyone had an opportunity to weigh in. There were some cautions that I would imagine during the discussion at the pick that would, similar discussions would provide an opportunity to raise the cautions you've heard here this evening. Does anyone else have anything for good of the order this evening? Josh?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to remind my colleagues and also mention to the public as well that the Bellevue College Foundation will be having its annual become exceptional luncheon, the 15th annual luncheon, on Tuesday, April 14th. As you may or may not know, Bellevue College is the third-largest educational institution in the state of Washington, and you may have recently heard rumors about some partnership opportunities with one of the larger institutions, that being Washington State University. We have a very large part in Bellevue College's future with the proposed East Campus in the Issaquah Highlands. The college itself serves over 37,000 students annually, which is, I think, slightly more than the population of Issaquah as a whole. And in fact, there are students coming from 70 countries. Very interesting, 30% of the student population, imagine if it was 30% of our city population, 30% of the student population receives grants and scholarships. And this luncheon is a big part of that success and the reason why so many of those students can succeed. So I've got about two seats left at my table, if anyone's interested. I'm happy to open a second one as well. There will be other elected officials there, and I hope to see you in mid-April for that big event. Thank you.
And does anyone else have anything for good of the order? Seeing none then, we are adjourned at 8:34.